All right, we'll call to order the city council meeting for Wednesday, October 9th, 2024. We have all council members present with the exception of Councilmember Lamb, who is not feeling well tonight, and Councilmember Bloom is participating electronically. Our first on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance, which will be led by the indispensable Shannon McDonald.
Will the audience please rise? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is a special recognition, and I won't give anything away. We'll just go to Mayor Burton to introduce this, and we'll all be happy and clap and stuff.
Okay, is this one for Marie? Because I got a couple.
So much for me not giving it away. That's what I have. Yes, that's the one I have on the agenda.
Wonderful. So Marie, while you come, I'll come over there. Yeah, go ahead and come on up. So those of you who went to girl camp may know the song Anne Marie, she loves Jean Pierre. I'm going to sing that one today, but I want to...
Did you go to...? Never mind.
I have more sisters than brothers.
I think our Ann loves Seth, just saying. I don't think it's Pierre.
Oh, I think you're right. See, I never went to girls camp, but obviously you did. Okay, so as you know, Marie and Toni have been helping with the communications and doing a superb job with the city for quite a while. And we had an incident last year that kind of created some issues for our city. It was a cyber attack. And in recognition, I'll read you what they said. So this is an award that she received from the Utah Public Information Office Association Conference, and they got it in St. George. And what the recognition says, "In recognition of your exceptional response during a critical cybersecurity incident, your remarkable skills in managing the situation with precision and discretion was exemplary. You ensured the community was informed while skillfully controlling the media," that's a big deal, "involvement, demonstrating outstanding crisis management." And as you know, we made it through that. We kept the public informed, and we kept the city flowing. And they were involved in that for a bunch of hours at strange times, and they kept the community comfortable with what we were going through as we worked through that. So we want to give Marie, and sadly Toni's not here to take her recognition today, but did she go...? Do you have that plaque with you? It's on the picture. Okay, the plaque is there. So we'd just like to give Marie a hand for being recognized and doing a fantastic job in her position. Marie, would you like to say something?
Thank you very much. Also, it was a cyber incident.
And that's why she got the award. Seriously, though, we didn't need the Utah PIO Association to tell us how awesome Marie is and how lucky we are to have her. So we are very glad you're here and very glad you were here last year to deal with the incident. So we shall call it forevermore. Thank you. Thank you for being here. That's great, and congratulations. All right, let's move right on on the agenda to public comment. This is your opportunity to address the council on most anything that has to do with the council or the city. We ask for you to give us your name, and whether you live in West Jordan, it's always helpful for us to know that so that our staff can follow up with you if necessary. We give you three minutes. If you're here to speak on behalf of a group, that's not as part of a group, but on behalf of a group, you get a couple extra minutes. It's not really a back and forth. If you have questions for the city, we will refer you to talk to staff, and they'll answer your questions one-on-one. But this is for us to listen to you. So go ahead, and if you're in the room and you'd like to address the council, we'll go ahead and open that up, and you can just come on up to the pulpit or the podium. And if you're online, there's a Zoom feature where you need to raise your hand. So do that so you indicate a desire to speak. Anybody in the room would like to address the council during the public comments? Okay, thanks, Rob. I was gonna say, we're not gonna have any. It's gonna be so boring.
It still could be boring. My name is Rob Bennett. I am a resident of West Jordan. And just with the opportunity I have as a resident to be able to sit and watch the events transpire that do in this august body, I just wanted to add my voice to the employees, the employees who do such a fantastic job on taking care of the residents of this city. We get to walk, wake up every morning and turn on our faucets and have clean water that we can drink. And we get to take our showers, and we get our garbage picked up, and we get our streets taken care of. And when it's snowing outside, the plows are there before we even had any concept that it was snowing. There are so many things that the staff of this city does that they don't get all the appreciation for the 110-plus thousand residents that watch them do their work and are appreciative of everything they do on our behalf. So I just wanted to take a second to both Marie and to all the other employees that work so hard and get so little recognition, except for these occasional times. We really are impressed, and we are really grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we need more appreciation awards. Anybody else in the room would like to address the council? Not seeing anybody rushing to the podium. Mr. Anderson, anybody online with a hand up?
Chair, there are four individuals watching online, none of whom have raised their hand.
Perfect. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment then, and we'll move to the next item on the agenda. This is reports to council. We'll start with reports from council members. Anybody like to address the council on what's been going on? Go Councilmember Green, then Councilmember Shelton. Now, I can't remember what was going on. No. Yesterday, we had the Association of Municipal Council meeting. I did get to join that one online because I had a work meeting that took too close to noon to run to Murray. It was a presentation from UTA. The interesting thing is looking at a couple of their long-term plans, how they plan on doing some things. If you guys didn't know it, they're actually looking at an orange line on tracks, and it will run somehow from the International Center out up to the U. And so that's an interesting concept. But they did announce some... They are looking at, you know, the long-term plans, and I can say that I think West Jordan is faring fairly well in the route changes and those kind of things. The one that was, to me, the most interesting is the increase that UTA, with the route changes that they're making now, is increasing in our area. So for those of you that haven't paid attention to this from UTA, UTA is increasing in the South Valley area, particularly West Jordan, South Jordan, the on-demand ride program that UTA offers. And if you're looking at getting around someplace in the city, and Uber and Lyft and those kind of things don't work, I would double-check with the UTA rideshare or the UTA on-demand ride program because it will take you to lots of places in this area, and it is not very expensive. And so if you weren't aware of that, to me, it was a good reminder yesterday about the on-demand program that they have in this area. And it's just something that we all should pay attention to, and, you know, it can help our residents. And, you know, we're all paying that quarter cent sales tax or more for supporting UTA, so we might as well take advantage of that. So please take a look at that. And as I get the slideshow from the AMC with the route changes and some of those other things, I will share it with the council. Thank you. Councilmember Shelton.
Thank you. The only thing I had to report on, and I'm surprised that Councilmember Green didn't bring it up, was the monster truck rally. You just totally forgot about that. It's been too long. But that's something we did do since our last council meeting. Lot of fun. They actually had us climb up a ladder and get into the bed of a monster truck to be to go out and be introduced. My only complaint, honestly, was there was a foul smell at that event, and I think it was the water that they were using to dampen down the dirt so there wouldn't be as much dust. I heard some comments about that, and I don't have a very good sense of smell, and I noticed it. So I thought it might be pretty bad for others. Next. Oh, I'm gonna steal from you, Councilmember Whitelock. Super proud of the high school students that are here today. And I totally stole that from Kayleen. Sorry. Super proud of these high school students. And you guys need to go back to your teacher and tell your teacher that you deserve extra credit if you stand up and give some kind of comment during the public comment period at city council. We'd love to hear from the high school students and what your concerns might be here in our city. You know, most of my friends are in their 50s, and most of the people I hear from are about my age, right? And so when a high school student or somebody can come up and say, hey, this is something that's been a problem for me, you know, every time I ride my skateboard across the street, I hit a rock and fall off the skateboard, you know, whatever your concerns in the city might be, we'd like to hear from you. So thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Bedore.
So I had an interesting dealing with the West Jordan police last week. I was very weird about 11:00, 11:30 at night. All of a sudden, we heard a little buzz from our, you know, little door chime thing, and then I was going, who could be at our door? My wife checked on her phone. She goes, the police are at our door. And I was like going, oh my, oh my gosh, what? I know. What's going on? Then my reelection's not gonna happen. But I went there and, really not knowing what it was gonna be, worried about, could this be a child? Could this be anything? And the officer just goes, hey, just wanted to let you know, I was driving by, you've got a car door just open in your driveway. Is there a reason for that? And I was like, uh, went out and just shut the door, and it had been open probably since about 7 o'clock at night, I think is when I did that. So hours that had just been open. But the real key to that is we get so much, we hear, you know, different things about bad things that police officers do, and they're not looking out enough, they're not doing this, not doing that. But I have seen nothing but the opposite, and this was a personal thing to me, that an officer just driving by noticed in my driveway, and the light was out in my car, that a door was open. And to notice that, take the time to stop, come and let me know about it, I was floored. I was so shocked. I didn't get the officer's name, which I really would like to have done, but it was... And then it was over a week ago, and it was a few days later that I went, oh, I need to talk about this. But just to the police officers that are out there and just doing their work and focused at all times, you have to be pretty focused to be able to drive by and just notice a car door is open. I mean, and it wasn't swung all the way open, it was about halfway open. But so my hat's off to our department. I've felt this many times and have said this many times, but that kind of focus to be able to think about that and think of our residents and to take that time to do it. So I thank the officer, and I thank our department and all of the employees that we have. As Citizen Rob Bennett was saying, so much work gets done for this city. This is a huge city, and it takes a lot of work to get done. So grateful for that, and so nice that that turned out to be such a cool experience, until I got back upstairs, and my wife reminded me I was an idiot for leaving my car door open. So you take the good and bad, but thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitelock.
So I typically do welcome the students, but what Councilmember Shelton doesn't realize is we have a student here that isn't on assignment. They chose to come, so that's even more exciting. We're always grateful when our youth show up. And what Councilmember Shelton doesn't also know is that you should come and talk to us because the reason we have a Wheels Park that will be having the grand opening Saturday is because a young man came when I was first on the council. I think Mayor Burton was still on the council, and he said, hey, we need a safe place to use our skateboards. He didn't say it like that. I don't remember his exact words, but basically, he came to several meetings and said, this is needed in our area. We need a place where we can go and do all our tricks on our wheels. And so fast forward, now we have a Wheels Park that will be opening. So if you don't come and speak, then we don't know what you're wanting. So don't be shy. We're all just people. Like, I'm just a mom. He's an actor, you know? We're all just people that do things. He's an army guy. He's a political guy. He's a photographer. We're just people. So come and talk to us. Share what you see we need in the city, or if there are problems, let us try to work with our executive branch and work on your problems. So thanks for being here, and I think we're the ones that should call the teacher and say, hey, if they are willing to talk, give them extra credit. But maybe it depends on how they're being graded. Some schools don't give extra credit anymore.
All right, thank you. I had a thought of something I was gonna say in between, and now I don't remember what it was. That was fun. All right, close of council comments, then we'll go to the mayor's report, or council office report. Sorry, I forgot about them.
Thank you for remembering. Counsel, just a couple things, and then a report from Mr. Hallmark. On the dais this evening, I provided you a magnet with a 988 hotline for those that may need assistance with suicide prevention and those kind of things. Those magnets were provided to you courtesy of Holy Cross Hospital, Jordan Valley. As you communicate with constituents in your districts and citywide, just know that there are resources to assist them. The other thing that I placed up there for you was a little name tag that you can use as you're out among the city or doing your town halls or visiting with constituents, ribbon cuttings, ground breakings, Saturday at the Wheels Park grand opening, ribbon cutting if you'd like. Those are available to you, and I've provided those to you. Those that are not here tonight, I have those in my office, and I will get them to them. With that, I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Hallmark to talk about youth council.
And continuing to address the youth in the audience, we have a youth council. It consists of members from West Jordan and Copper Hills High School. If you're interested, there are some flyers in the back. Grab them. But the update is that we met yesterday at Veterans Memorial Park. The youth indicated that they wanted to do a fall cleanup through the park, so we grabbed some bags, grabbed some gloves, and walked through the park, and they had a great time socializing. Councilmember Green was able to join us, and we had 13 youth there yesterday. That's our biggest activity so far. There are 16 currently in the group, and we'll go to 20. So if there are four of you in the audience that want to join, we'll max out at 20. But other than that, youth council's rolling along, and they're having a good time. Thanks for your continued support.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitelock.
I just wanted to clarify. You said West Jordan and Copper Hills, and those are what we have. But we accept youth from itineraries, Taylorsville. As long as you live in our city, you can participate.
Councilmember Shelton.
Thank you. And I'm trying to blink. I had it in my... You and I did the same thing. If I remember, I'll bring it back up. It had to do with the youth council, and so we'll put it on ice for a minute.
I was gonna say, if there's more than 20 who want to do it, we should hold elections. But like the, you know... Okay, Councilmember... Oh, Councilmember Shelton.
I remember now. The youth council is, just speaking to the young people in the audience, the youth... Serving on the West Jordan Youth Council can be something that could help your resume for college application. It could be very, very influential in getting into the college you want to get into, or even getting the job you want after high school. It's a great opportunity. I really recommend it.
All right, cool. Anything... All right, I think we're done with the council report, so let's go to the mayor's office.
Thank you, Council Chair Jacob. The first item I want to bring up is 7800 South. You know, there's a lot of construction going on there. There's been a lot of concern about the intersection of Fallwater Drive. There were some no-left turn signs there, but yet people were turning anyway and creating hazards. So we, the contractors now put up delineators, anyway, those little plastic things you stick in the ground and put up there to help stop the left turn so it will increase safety and keep the flow going smoother. And that should be in there by now. They said they would put it in there this week. Have you noticed it? Is it there?
It's actually the big orange barrels that are in between the big orange barrels.
Maybe that's just until they put the other ones up.
But they put enough of them now that you can't turn between them, so that's effective. However, the intersection that you can barely see on the edge of this picture on Clant...
Yes, I see that.
That's as big a problem. The left-hand turn is not prohibited there by a sign, but it's blocking traffic even worse back onto Mountain View at rush hour. I think the reason why the left turn was never posted there is because that street's not supposed to exist. That was a construction access.
You're correct, and when this work is done, that will not connect.
Right, but in the meantime, it does, and people are turning, and it's a problem. So if you want to reach out to the contractor about that one, too, or at least look at it.
I will bring that back. So thank you for that. That's good suggestion. And I don't know what that street name is, but I know which one you're talking about.
Cranston.
Ranstan?
Cranston.
Oh, I see that. Cranston. Thank you.
Cranberry, but with a stunt.
That's very good. Thank you. So those lights you're looking at right there, those are LED lights. They're really bright and really cool, and they light up stadiums. We are going to be installing those. We're just getting ready to do that right now because the monster truck is behind us at the arena. And this will be so nice. It'll give us better light than we had before, better color than we had before, better energy efficiency, using less power. And the other lights were HID, which means they're high intensity discharge, which means for them to work, they have to get up to a certain temperature. So when the power flickers, they go off, they have to cool down, and then they have to heat back up again to get to the right temperature for them to light. And so if we have a power fluctuation during a rodeo event and it's dark, we have put that rodeo event on hold for 30, 40 minutes while we run that cycle through there. This will eliminate that problem. People have complained sometimes that we leave the lights on during the fireworks and do the drone shows. Well, we do that because if we turn them off and we turn them back on when the drone show's over, it may not come back on yet. And if we wanted to, we could turn these off and on, off and on. We could flash them, make it look really cool. So if someone does something spectacular, we can, you know, go along with applause and do flashy lights with them, and it'll use less power, as I mentioned. So we can use that power source for doing other things, such as the television thing, which uses quite a bit of power. And they were talking about going with the bigger one, but we didn't have the power apparatus for it. But when this is done, we could do that if we chose to do so, and it just gives us so much flexibility, and they're color adjustable, too. So it'll be great. And we did that with a grant from the Energy Efficiency Grant, and that's what's paid for those lights. So that'll be good for us. So not only will the grant provide for us, but it'll save us money in the long run. So drive past there and watch our good electricians out doing some work. Okay, there was a ground, I'm sorry, a ribbon cutting on Thursday, October 3rd, at the Health Source Chiropractic, which is over on 90th South. And if you missed that event, just know that that's there. And if you have been there, please go back and get adjusted. Okay, 6200 South, we have been repaving and working on that street. You may recall that we replaced the storm drains on there, and now we are in the process of repaving, and it's close to be getting done. Now, you know, only half that street belongs to West Jordan, the other half belongs to Kearns or, well, mostly Kearns. So we have coordinated with Kearns, part of it's us, but most of it's Kearns, and they are paying us for their portion, and we are doing all the work over there. And that should be wrapped up in another week or two, and that road desperately needed this attention, and we're really pleased to have that done. And I think the Kearns residents are as well. So if you're tired of the construction happening on other streets, go drive on this one when it's done and enjoy the drive. So EDC Utah, the city has been a member of EDC Utah for quite some time, for several years, and I've been on the board for a couple of years. And this year, they selected to put me as their vice chair of the public sector. So I'm honored to represent West Jordan in that capacity with EDC Utah. Also, you may have heard that EDC Utah is merging with the Salt Lake Chamber. So Salt Lake Chamber will still be there, EDC Utah will still be there, but they'll be under the umbrella of the Salt Lake Chamber. And they will have five board members on the Salt Lake Chamber who will also be EDC members. And I have talked with Derek, the president of Salt Lake Chamber, about being on that. And so he is going to come out and interview me and see if I can do that so I can make sure that as this transition happens, that it doesn't become EDC Salt Lake, that it continues to be EDC Utah. And as we have an itinerous student here, I want to let you know that I was also selected to be on the board for the itinerous Early College High School. My son actually did graduate from there. He was in the very first graduating class that they had when they were over at Salt Lake Community College, and now they're in their nice new building, and hopefully you got an opportunity to go out there when they had their ribbon cutting for their gym. And so I'm honored to represent the city with itineraries over there. And as far as I know, itineraries doesn't have any youth council on there yet. Is that correct? So we'll see if we can change that. If the one that's here today doesn't sign up, we'll find somebody else that will like And I know you've all talked about this, but I'm going to bring it up again. The grand opening for the Wheels Park. I'm gonna turn to these guys, the students out here. Students, the grand opening for the Wheels Park. What does that mean? That means if you ride a bicycle, if you ride roller skates, if you ride roller blades, if you ride inline skates, if you have a skateboard, if you're in a wheelchair, anything on a wheel, we want you to come out to our Wheels Park grand opening. We're gonna have food, we're gonna have prizes, we're gonna have fun, we're gonna have events over there. You won't want to miss this. That will be this Saturday at 11 o'clock. By show of hands, who will not be there? Oh, great, I'll see you all there then. So I'm very excited about that. By the way, some of you talked about the video you saw of me riding there. I'll have to confess, that was me at the start, and that was me at the end, but I did have a stunt double who filled in for me in the middle part. And sadly, that stunt double can't be here at the grand opening because he's riding in St. George for the Red Bull tournament. And I thought, we should let Red Bull know that West Jordan had an event, and they would have rescheduled, I think. Okay, next one is, I have open office hours coming up, Thursday, the 10th, from 4 to 6. So if any of you want to come and meet with me, I would be happy to have you. No appointment necessary, just come and show up. We'd be happy to see you there. And the item, I don't have a slide for it because he's here in person, is Adam Gardner. Adam, would you come on up, please? So Adam Gardner has taken Toni's place with our intergovernment connections, and I would like Adam to tell you a little bit about your background and why you think you're qualified, well, why we think you're qualified for that position.
Justify yourself.
Just keep it under two hours, if you would, of some of the things in your background and what you've done. And if you don't like the information that Adam provides you, his brother is here that might give us more accurate information, the things that Adam may not share with us if you want some of the background. After he shows that, if you have any questions you'd like to ask Adam, I'd be happy to entertain that as well.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm, first of all, the thing that qualifies...
Thanks, Mayor. I'm, first of all, the, my, the thing that qualifies me the most is I live in West Jordan, and I work in West Jordan, and I love West Jordan. So that's number one. I've worked at every level of government. And usually, that's a bad thing, but in here, it might be okay. I worked on the federal level with, as a staffer for Congressman Rob Bishop in the first congressional district. And most recently, I was serving as the state director for US Senator Mitt Romney. And I did that for three years. I worked at the county level as an aide to Councilmember Amy Winder Newton for two years. I was a member of the state legislature in the House. And then I was the county recorder for a little while. So it sounds like I can't keep a job, and that may be true. But I've had my own lobbying practice for the last three or four years, and have really enjoyed representing West Jordan for the last year. And so after Tony's departure, to be able to be more involved with the city is something I'm really looking forward to. And I have to say that the mayor's cabinet and everyone that I have met so far, including council members that I already know, have been very welcoming, very helpful, and eager to work with the legislature. And that gets me really excited. Is that good enough?
That's good.
All right.
Anything you want to ask of him?
Any questions for our friend, Mr. Gardner? Yeah, we'll, we'll handle those one on one. Oh, Councilmember Green.
Should we ask him to be the prognosticator and who's gonna win all the elections? And we'll bet you, no, never. I'm just giving you a hard time.
Listen to KSL nightly from 7 to 9.
Yeah, he does, he does do that, too. That's right.
Thank you.
That's another job that you failed to mention, that job in your resume there.
That doesn't make me qualified.
We're thrilled to have Adam among our miss, and he will be representing the city with us on the LPC and during the session. So he's, he's got his work cut out for him. Thank you, Adam.
The last thing I'll say is Councilmember Green mentioning the service via for the southwest quadrant of the, of the valley for UTA to get from A to B. I've used it, and it's awesome and cheap. So good plug.
Thank you. Thank you. And then I'll turn the door for Corbin.
Well, Mayor, I want to say thanks for cracking the joke about the chiropractor. And there was another comment I had about something else that you used.
I was gonna say that report was electrifying, but.
Yeah. No, I was gonna say with those lights, the LED lights at the rodeo stadium, I was actually commenting to my wife about the LED lights at the Bees Stadium. We went to a Bees game a couple weeks ago. And I noticed when somebody hit a homerun, the lights all flash as the guy runs around the bases, right? And I remarked to my wife, when I was a kid at, in LA growing up, I'd go to a Dodger game, and after the game, they'd turn off the lights for the fireworks when they had a fireworks night. And then you'd have to sit there for 10 or 15 minutes while the lights came back on, because it took forever. There's no way they could have flashed them back then. So I knew exactly what you were talking about.
That's right. And when they do turn the lights off, I think everybody gets delighted.
Yeah. Yeah, I hope it's not delighted at this point. All right, let's go to the administrative report from Corbin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like Greg Davenport, our Public Utilities Director, to give you an update about the sewer upgrades in the Copper Hills Parkway.
I thought he was gonna tell us about 13th West.
I'm sorry that I'm up here again giving updates on New Bingham Highway. But when they did the closure to make the connection in Grizzly Way, they found that there was an unidentified lateral from Copper Hills High School that went into the sewer that was going to be abandoned. And so, rightly so, they decided not to do the abandonment at that time. Because we have to hook that sewer lateral up, and it is in the main driveway for Copper Hills High School, we've decided to do that during fall break, so that we don't impact the high school. That will delay that road closure and everything else about three weeks, because fall break isn't until the 21st of October. So there won't be any more time that he'll be actually there working. But we need to, we're gonna suspend part of that project so that we can wait for the proper time to do the work. So I just need to let everyone know that they'll be hooking the, the unidentified lateral for Copper Hills up on the 21st during fall break. Then they'll move down to 48th West and do some work. And then they'll move to the railroad tracks and close New Bingham Highway for a few days. So when I have a better schedule, I'll give you a copy, whether I'll email that to Alan, or we'll have enough time, I don't know. But we just wanted to let you know there was that small change. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Green, you got an update on 13th West?
The contractor is making progress on 1300 West. If you saw today, they were putting asphalt down from 73 up to 70th. I expect that by Monday, they'll have restriked that 73 to 70th and removed the traffic control there. We are taking, right now, that in the south area, they are hooking up the individual subdivisions to the new line that's been passed off. It's been passed up all the way to the entrance to the sewer treatment plant. We will make the connection to the sewer treatment plant water next Tuesday, where we'll shut them off and then connect them in. Then we'll just have a small section between the sewer treatment plant and Bora Bora to complete. I think that will, the contractor thinks that they'll be done with that in three to four weeks. Then they'll come back and fix all the patches. The contract goes all the way until Thanksgiving. I don't think that they're gonna need all that time. So, but definitely before Thanksgiving, that'll, they'll all be gone. The bad, that's the good news. The bad news is there are so many telecom companies that want to get in after I leave. And I know that Embridge or Dominion wants to get in as well. So for those people who are hoping to get a pause or some relief to construction on 13th West, that's not gonna come this year, unfortunately. So that's my update. Any other questions?
Thank you. That's great.
Thank you, Greg. Anything else?
That's it, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's, excuse me. All right, let's go to the next item on the agenda. It's our public hearing. This is for ordinance 24-45, amending this West Jordan City Code related to council, city council responsibilities and leadership. And we'll have Mr. Anderson introduce this.
Yes, this is coming back to the council. If you recall, back in August, at the committee of the whole meeting, the city council made changes on how council leadership will operate. They added a position that's kind of like a past chair. They want the leadership to go through rotations rather than the election. And so we went through the code. I worked with Mr. Boyce from the attorney's office. And what we came up with are some, just some minor changes. So if you look at code 165, at line nine through 11, this is just cleanup, because you had made changes on advice and consent. So this comes in line with the advice and consent changes you had made previously. Lines 19 and 21, basically add that we now call instead of chair and vice chair, it's just council leadership, which are the three individuals. And that they will be elected using procedures set forth in council policies and procedures. And that's all on 165. If you go to 169, this is the election of council chair and vice chair, which will now be called election of council leadership. And that actually just refers back to the council leadership section that's coming to you shortly. In council policy and procedures, everything else is deleted in that section of code. 1610, what you asked is that we had the three seats. So we've put it in as council chair, council vice chair, and chair ex officio. And I'm gonna need Mr. Boyce to help remind me what ex officio. We came up with a whole bunch of definitions. And chair ex officio is the council chair from the prior term. So what you had agreed, came, what you came to agreement with is the chair would serve for six month terms, the vice chair would rotate to chair. The chair from the prior term becomes the chair ex officio the next term. We then call it member of council leadership. There's a section, the council chair may assign council members to ad hoc committees when requested by the mayor or the mayor's designee. The council chair, in consultation with leadership, line 18, sets the agenda, conducts the meeting. And then 23 through 26 is just a continuation of the, the chain of command. So the, the order of leadership would be chair, vice chair, chair ex officio. And in the case that the chair, the vice chair, the chair ex officio cannot run the meeting, then the remaining four of you would draw lots to see who would be the acting chair for the meeting. If there's less than four of you, you can't meet. The last thing in 1611 is not really related to leadership, but we do have several contracts that we have with Prime Gov, Y2 Analytics, the individual that helps us with the minutes while we're in this three meeting a month schedule. And this just basically clarifies that all these subcontractors, there's a chain of command for them to interface with the city through the council office. And those are the changes that, based on the minutes and the direction we got from that committee of the whole work session are necessary to continue forward. Do you have any questions?
Perfect. Any questions, clarifying questions for staff before we open the public hearing? All right, I'm not seeing any questions.
Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Because this is a code amendment, we would, we need to know if there's anything we hadn't thought of that the public has. So if there's any testimony that somebody in the, in the audience would like to offer, this would be your time. We're gonna open this up. The, the rules are pretty much the same as the public comment period from earlier. You get up to three minutes. And if you're online, you need to have your hand raised on the Zoom. We'll go first to the rooms. There's anybody who'd like to comment on this in the room? All right, I'm seeing nobody here in person rushing to the podium. So let's go to online. Anybody online willing, want, willing or wanting to speak?
Chair, right now, there are five individuals online, and none of, none of them have raised their hand to speak.
Perfect. We will close the public hearing then and bring this back to the council for discussions, motions, and otherwise. Councilmember Green?
I'm not sure I like the term ex officio. Because the definition of ex officio is by virtue or because of an office. And so if you were looking at ex officio, vice president of the United State serves ex officio as president of the US Senate. It's, ex officio means that you're on a thing, because, you know, if you, if you recall a few years ago, we used to have the council members as ex officio members of the mayor's committees. Well, we were ex officio members of the mayor's committee be, be by virtue of us being on the city council. This, ex officio doesn't describe, I mean, it, it's not by virtue of the fact that they're on the council or anything. Ex officio mean, I, I'm not gonna vote against the ordinance, but I do not like the term. And I'm not sure it meets the definition of ex officio when you look at the definition. Chair pro tem, past, past chair, those things would be better. And the only other thing I'm gonna make a comment is I wish we would have got rid of all the set force. And we're trying to eliminate a lot of that legalese and ordinances. And I wish we would have looked at a couple of the other words and eliminated it when we're getting there. But that's me. But like I said, I'm not gonna vote against these ordinances. But I don't like the term ex officio, and I don't think it meets the intent of what we're trying to do. And I think we really ought to go back and look and decide what the, the name of the title was. None of us ever mentioned the word chair ex officio in the minutes. And, and, you know, we talked about chair pro tem, or past chair, or those kinds of things. And yeah, ex officio is a title, but I don't think it works here.
Councilmember Shelton?
So my question is actually directly to Councilmember Green. Could it, I don't disagree with anything you said, but I'm wondering if, if it could mean like ex officio, is it ex officio because or by, because this person was chair now, because by virtue of them having been chair, they are now ex officio? Or is that, is that the wrong way to use that term, in your opinion?
I don't think that makes the, the definition that I've seen for ex officio, but I guess it could be. But anyway, I, it's not something that, like I said, I'm gonna vote against, but I don't think that's the proper use of that term. And I think we probably, as we're, you know, as, let's, let's pass it, let's get the stuff, and then we can look at things in the, in the, and see if we're using the right term, or if that's what we really want.
Thank you, Council Director Anderson. Did you want to opine on that before we go to Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes, I was just gonna say, if there's four of you that want to, once you have the motion to approve with amended language, we can, we can change that term.
Councilmember Whitlock?
And I was going to basically say what he said, only say that I'd be amenable if you wanted to make a motion with another term, past, past chair, whatever. I'm, I'm happy to support a different term.
I think I just had past chair when we talked about it before. But, um, thank you. Councilmember Bedore?
Yeah, I just, I was gonna say, I don't see this going on a business card, so it doesn't matter a whole lot to me. I just.
Shoot, there's my point.
I know, like the whole part of what this is doing. And that's, that's where I'm really going for. So one word's not gonna matter to me, one way or the other.
Right. Councilmember Shelton?
I think I might be in favor of changing ex officio to just past chair. I, I think it might be easier for the layman to understand what that means, right?
Yeah. Well, we are laymen. Councilmember Green?
How about I move to approve ordinance number 24-45, amending the West Jordan City Code, replacing the term council chair ex officio with past chair?
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Green, second from Councilmember Shelton. Now discussion to that motion. I'm not seeing a lot of lights light up, so I'll, I'll go, I'll, I'll just mention, I've thought about this since the committee of the whole meeting and this change that we're doing. And I'm just, I'm not sure that I like it. And, and it's hard for me to articulate why. But it, it takes it from, and again, I, I can't really articulate why very clearly. But so, so bear with me as I, as I try really quick. The, the way it is now, and, and please don't think of this because I'm sitting in this seat, that I mean it, because, you know, it relates to me. It relates to Councilmember Conahay, who sat here, Councilmember Whitlock has sat here, anybody who sits in this seat and, and chairs this council, and applies. But I think the more heads you put on a snake, the less effective it is. That's, that's just my thought, is that we've, we're taking it from leadership of one with a right hand to leadership of three. And whether that's better or not is kind of what we're, what we're talking about. And I know it was kind of my idea, as we were spitballing ideas in the committee of the whole, but the more that I think about it, the more I think, is there an unintended consequence that I'm, that, that I can just foggy, foggyly, blurly, blurly, something that's not quite in focus out there somewhere that I just can't quite put my finger on. But to me, there's a, there's an unintended consequence out there that I can't quite. And maybe it's just after, you know, it, it's like when we went to the strong mayor form of government, right? We went to the strong mayor form of government. One of the arguments that was made by the proponents of that was we have one strong figurehead voice of the city when it comes to, you know, intergovernmental committees, when it comes to representing the city. I mean, Mayor Burton just talked about all these boards and things that he's sitting on by virtue of being mayor. Ex officio, sort of, you know, things, these boards that he's, he's a part of because he's a strong mayor. And that we lacked that representation when the mayor sat up here, right? And that we lacked that representation when the mayor sat up here, right? And was just one of seven, because we had a seven-headed snake. So is, I know it's, it's, the timing is not great, and this is just kind of some of the thoughts that I've had since we talked about this last time around, and I just wanted to get that out there. I'm just, I'm just not sure that we've thought of everything. But, anyway, Councilmember Bedore?
Uh, I, I don't think that this is too many heads. I think we're still having one Chair. This whole thing was brought together. Part of the idea is, is as soon as I came on and was elected, I got a phone call saying, now get ready for the war of who's going to be the Chair, because everyone's going to come at you and want your vote. And I was instantly, why is, why is the council at war? Why are we all fighting for something that, to me, and I haven't been in that chair, but should have no real power anyway? Because it's not, uh, you know, if we're the Avengers, it's not one person's Tony Stark and everyone else is second banana. We're all here. We're seven people. And I didn't like the fact that we were, some of us, all trying to have something that, you know, and, and get votes and scramble and then hurt feelings and everything else for something that, in my opinion, shouldn't matter that much. So I think that it shouldn't be, the, you know, the leader who was ever on should have input slightly from all six of the other people. Regardless, if something is not going well, if that person is not leading us into battle, they're the, the Chair that runs meetings and does some things. And I'm not trying to, you know, um, you know, downplay the article of a Chair, but I, I think that this is something that, that we should be looking at doing. And I never would want to think that it's one person leading the council. That is not what a council is to me. A council is seven people, or however many people, as one, not one leading the others. And that's my thoughts.
Councilmember Green?
I agree with, I would agree with Councilmember Bedore. I, I, I really don't, having a third person, really, it, it's, part of that is, as we talked about in the past, part of that is continuity. Um, and I, and I think that, you know, when we're setting agendas, and, and, and I sat on council leadership for a couple of years helping set agendas, setting agendas really isn't deciding what's on each, what's going to be on each week. A lot of that's driven by staff and workflows and those kind of things. What setting agendas is, is what's the flow of this meeting? What do we want to go first? Is there a better flow? What do we want to do? Those kind of things. It's signing documents that, that, because the statute requires it. And having a third person be in that line that says, in theory, is that, you know, if we, if, if, if a couple of people are gone, the third person that's had some experience running the meetings gets to, gets to run, runs the meeting, and it makes it simpler. The current code actually says that if the Council Chair and Vice Chair aren't at the meeting, then the council has to decide who's going to run the meeting. And, yeah, that's all we need to do is have 15-minute discussion at the start of the meeting to who's going to run the meeting. Never mind. I wanted to put in by draw, draw numbers out of a hat in the ordinance for that one, but that, that didn't work. So I'm okay with this. And, and, and I'm, you know, I, I think that the wording of the ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Anderson, doesn't require that the council, the Past Chair actually have to attend every leadership meeting, so it's not like it's a time burden. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, there, there is no requirement. We have had leadership meeting with just the Chair, and we've had leadership meeting with just the Vice Chair.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we're okay. Um, I think the idea is just, you know, to, to, to make sure that we're, we just got some good continuity going through, who can, who can sign things and who can do what. And so I'm okay. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this. I like the idea. So, yeah, I, I, I don't see the, and by the way, if I, if I, if I understand the Salt Lake County Council's format, form of, they're, the way they've organized, they have a Chair, a Vice Chair, and they have a third person, too. They call them Council Pro tem. So I, I don't see that, I, I don't see any, I don't see any downside to, to this, because it just provides us a way that has a little bit more continuity if, if the Chair and the Vice Chair can't show up.
All right, any further discussion? Any, is, uh, Councilmember Bloom still online? Do you have comments, hand raised?
Oh, I didn't raise my hand. I don't think I did. But, no, my, I, I, I like, so I agree with Bedore on this one. Um, and, and, and I agree. I, I like, I like what we discussed in work session.
Excellent. All right. Let's go ahead and roll call vote, and we'll go to Warren, Mr. Hallmark for this one.
Chair Jacob?
He would come to me first.
It is random. Oh, sorry. I thought you were thinking, like, you know. All right. Councilmember Whitelock?
Sure.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Thank you. I show that motion passes five to one.
Perfect. Thank you. And I'll just,
By the way, before you make a comment, can I just wish Ms. Quick a happy anniversary tonight? Thank you.
Oh, is that where she is? Okay. Um, no, and I'll just, just really quickly on the comment. The, the great thing about this ordinance is, we can try it out for a little while, and if it doesn't work, we can always change it. So this is, this is a good one. All right. Mr. Anderson?
Oh, I'm just,
Oh, oh, you're just prepared for the next one. Next item on the agenda then is Item 7A. This is the business item, Resolution 24-035, a request by Max Muller and the Gardner Group for a Parks Impact Fee Credit for the GEM, I want to say Gem, West Jordan Apartment for the Jordan Landing North Apartments. And, uh, are you, Taylor? Are we going to go to the applicant first? Uh, we're going to go to the applicant first. Mr. Muller from Gardner Group, come introduce this item. Thanks. And Taylor, we'll go next.
Thank you, Council, for, for having us and letting us bring this to you. Um, before we start, oh, okay. Sometimes I'm too loud. Um, before we start, I just want to say, I've really appreciated working with the staff here at the city. Their responsiveness and collaboration is commendable. So, anyway, on with this request. We, uh, we have a apartment project we're building out by New Bingham and 6800 West. And along with that, we've agreed to acquire and build a parkland for the city. That'll be four acres. And upon reviewing it, we, we noticed, obviously, that we'll have a, a park fee for each unit, and that's roughly $3,500 a unit. We've been approved for 336 units. Uh, and so if you do the quick math, that's about $1.2 million. However, acquiring this land, the land comes in at about $800,000, and the estimate for the cost to build the park, right now, a conceptual estimate is about $3.4 million. And that includes infrastructure. It's raw land right now. So there's a lot that has to go into that. Uh, and so our request simply today is to provide us a credit for what we would typically pay in the park fee, knowing that we have to pay such a large amount for the land and then, obviously, to build the park. So that's the request, and thank you.
Would you mind just, for the record, stating your name?
Yeah, sorry, Max Muller.
I, I stated his name, so you're good. Any questions for the applicant before we go to staff on this? All right, seeing none, let's go to Taylor to elaborate or pontificate or,
Thank you, Chair Jacob and Council. Just a couple things I want to touch on that Max didn't. First, if this park is on our master plan, our Parks and Open Space Trails master plan, you can see on the map there, it's the one that's circled and red in the southwest quadrant there. Uh, that was a master plan which was approved in 2018, so it has been on our plan for a while there. The park, you can see, that will be dedicated to the city, is what's outlined in red on here. The rest of that is the Gem West Jordan Apartments. It is important to understand that they will have their own park space, community gardens, swimming pool and clubhouse inside of the apartment complex, which will be for their residents. So this is a system improvement park rather than a project improvement park, and that's why they're asking for that impact fee credit. I think I already went over those numbers, but if you have any questions, I'm happy
All right. You've gone. You're good.
Uh, that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Okay. Was there another slide after this?
There was, but it's just kind of saying stuff I already said. I just got it out of order.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Any questions for staff on this? This is a business item, so there's no public hearing. Councilmember Shelton's actually up first. Go ahead.
So my question is, um, this is being dedicated to the city. Will the city be required to maintain it?
Yes.
And are the impact fees intended to help with the maintenance of a park, or just the creation of a park?
Just for the creation. You can't use impact fees for maintenance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alan, would you go back? One more. Yeah, just, let's leave it right there, and you know, if somebody has other questions. Uh, Councilmember Green?
Here's my question procedurally for the city attorney. We are, they're seeking an impact fee credit. Now, credit, waiver, probably a fine line. Is this considered an impact fee waiver under state statute that we need a public hearing?
No.
Ask a yes or no question, you get a yes or no answer?
You are not under cross-examination, but yes, I was trying to do a leading question.
Thank you, Council.
All right. Any other questions, comments, motion? I'll just pipe in, the, the purpose when we, when we have a development coming in and, and we have an impact fee that is for parks, we have one for police, we have one for public safety, one for roads, we have all these impact fees that get charged because developments have impact, right? The more residents you have, the more parks you need, the more police stations you have to build and things like that, and the more roads you need. Um, in this case, it would be kind of silly, I would think, for us to require them to build a park and to pay to build a park. It seems kind of like double-dipping on our side. So I would, I'm in favor of this. Go ahead, Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you. I too am in favor of this, but I wanted to give a little bit of explanation, because sometimes when our community hears that A-word, they get upset, because they think we have a lot of them. I can't necessarily argue against that. At times, I think we do, too. But in this instance, I feel like where these are being built makes a lot of sense, because this will help a neighborhood that is in an industrial area. It will give a very nice buffer. And I feel like Gardner and Company have been very good to work with, and I think this is a win-win for the city, so I am very much in support. And I agree with Chair Jacob. It doesn't really make sense for us to collect money to, I mean, it's, we're winning on, actually, I think we're winning on this one. So I appreciate that, because financially, if I look at these numbers, I think, uh, thank you.
Yes, when somebody offers, what, a difference of $3 million, I usually say thank you, too. Uh, Councilmember Green?
The, the one thing, and, 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 and I'll just throw this out, for those that don't understand the map, and then Taylor, if I'm wrong, you can correct me on this one. Uh, but this, this park is also tied into the current detention pond that's on the edge of that neighborhood. So it's not just, it, 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 it expands that open space and adds to the existing detention pond that's the grass and everything that we're probably going to use for some sort of multi-use field in the future, as I see the neighbor, as, as I see the mayor's head nod. And so this is a, this is an added addition to the, the current open space and infrastru, the park open space type structure. And I think it's a, it's, 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 will definitely help, um, the, the neighborhood that's there, that is on the edge of an industrial area. But I think it will also help, and, and as we look at things in the future, that will also help the Copper Fields neighborhood, um, over across, just across, really, they're just across 90th from that. And although they're close to Ronwood, it provides the, it provides them, um, a little bit of extra activity and open space, too. And so I think this is a great addition to the neighborhood, and I think we're right. I think, uh, we just say thank you and move on.
Councilmember Bedore?
Now, before I say thank you and move on, I do want to say that, uh, I, I agree with everything, especially what Councilmember Whitelock was saying, with that this was, uh, I read through this three times, because I thought I was missing something. I kept going, all right, well, where's, what's the catch? And then I thought, well, I'm just going to wait, because someone else will point it out to me later. Um, I, I very much appreciate this. I love the fact that it's getting some green in an area that you can look at that map and see that there's no green out there, uh, park-wise. So this is great. I appreciate the work that's been done. I appreciate working with our staff, um, to make this happen. So, again, I'll now say thank you and move on.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember, Council Director Anderson, will you go to the motion slide? Just because I think we're past the numbers part of the conversation.
I, I was going to ask you to move up, because I was going to move to approve Resolution
Councilmember Shelton?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Green, uh, motion to approve, and a second by Councilmember Shelton. Any further discussion to the motion? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote, roll call style.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
And Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Thank you. I show that motion passes six to zero.
Excellent. All right, let's go to, next item on the agenda is Resolution 24-038, appointing two members of the council to the Justice Court Nominating Commission. We're oh, it's appointing two members, two, oh, okay. I thought it was two members of the council, too. Okay. I obviously need somebody to introduce this. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, thank you. Uh, at the last work session, we had Mr. Peters from the Administrative Office of the Courts who came and talked to you about the process to replace Judge Coons, who is retiring. Uh, that process is about a six-month process. Part of state code requires a nominating commission that's made up of someone chosen by, I can't remember all the names, but the county executive, the municipal mayors choose somebody, the courts have a couple people, and the governing body gets to choose two people. Mr. Peters said typically, generally, that is the city manager, city CAO, and the court administrator. So what is before you is a resolution appointing those two members to the Justice Court Nominating Commission. Uh, there will be, they will meet at least twice. They will probably be lengthy meetings. One meeting is reviewing all the applications received by the Administrative Office of the Courts. And the second meeting or more is interviewing potential candidates. At, at some point after that, um, several names, four or five names, uh, from that commission, will submit those will submit those names to the mayor. The mayor will choose one and that name that he chooses has to come to you for advice and consent.
Okay, and that's a separate appointment from the two that we're talking about today.
Correct. This is just for the nominating commission to review applications and interview potential candidates. And like Mr. Peter said, that's typically, generally, the city manager, city CAO, which would be Mr. Lee, and then Carol Warnick is the court administrator over at the Justice Court.
All right. So.
And Mr. Lee could answer additional questions. He's been through this before.
Perfect. Let me, let me ask that because the, the the resolution as it's printed in the packet has two blanks, right, that we would fill in, fill in the names. Is it, there's a convention of who those names would often be? Is there a requirement? I mean, can we literally select any two people from anywhere? Can I select, I was gonna say Adam Gardner, but now he's part of the city. You know? Anybody? Is that?
Yes.
See, I, there I go. I asked you yes or no question.
You, you can select any, you as governing body can select any two people to be on this nominating commission. In general, I will say you want to select people who have the perspective of the city and the city, not only the community, but the city organization because as Mr. Anderson mentioned, the other members of that commission include the AOC and the judicial branch perspective, the county perspective, and so on. So you want, typically, you want people that are inside the organization, have familiarity, familiarity with the justice court within the organization and the issues relating to city administration and the justice court operations, which is why Mr. Peter said most cities choose, or most usually when this goes through the process, they choose a court administrator or city manager.
Okay, and then, and then did I hear correctly that the mayor will also appoint somebody to this committee that will require advice and consent?
No, so this, this committee, this, this body meets, they review all the applicants to be judge. And they submit to the mayor a shortlist that the mayor can appoint from.
Gotcha.
The mayor has to appoint a judge from that shortlist or ask that the process start over. And then that appointee comes to the city council for advice and consent.
Got it.
Chair, not, not to play tennis back and forth. I think what you're asking is the municipal mayors of Salt Lake County
Okay, I got that.
Will choose a representative to be on the nominating commission.
I, I think the reason why I was mixing that up in my head was because our, our resolution as printed says section one is advice and consent. We're not providing advice and consent here. We should probably strike those words from this when we make the, the motion because this is our appointment. This is not our advice and consent to somebody else's appointment, so.
That is, that is correct.
Uh, let's go to Councilmember Whitelock.
So I know that when, when they came and presented, they gave us exactly what, what is in our packet that would be Mr. Lee and Ms. Warnick. And I agree, Ms. Warnick is part of the courts. Judge Coons feels she's appropriate. Great. I would like to propose that maybe we think about using Paul Jerome, who is the assistant city administrator in our city. And these are my reasons. I feel he has more bandwidth to spend the time to really look at these closer. I also feel like when, when it comes back to the mayor, Mr. Lee will be a big part of working with the mayor on who they finally select. I have no doubt that the mayor will work with Mr. Lee on that. In addition, Mr. Lee is Mr. Jerome's boss, so that doesn't preclude Mr. Lee from looking at those resumes. Mr. Jerome could share them. Mr. Lee could request that. It's his boss, he'd show them to him. And for me, I, I just feel more comfortable having it be Mr. Lee, and those are my reasons. I've Mr. Jerome, thank you. Mr. Jerome, I just feel like he has the bandwidth to, to do it. And I feel like Mr. Lee has so many responsibilities in our city already. And while Mr. Lee has already served on one of these commissions, one of the things we also want to do as a city, I believe, is to grow our employees. And what better way to grow Mr. Jerome than to give him this opportunity to do this while he has Mr. Lee to fall back on to ask questions and to learn? Because I, I think that a good organization grows their employees, and I think this is a growth opportunity for Mr. Jerome. So I would, I would suggest that we appoint Mr. Paul Jerome and Ms. Carol Warnick.
Councilmember Green.
I'm gonna jump in here. I think I'm with Councilmember Whitelock here. I like the idea of and, and, and to add more to what than, than what Councilmember Whitelock said, I like the idea of different perspectives. And and, and, and I've served, I, I've served on hiring panels for decades. And I've been in multiple hiring panels where you have two complete different perspectives from two different people and somebody wants something. What, what, what I would like to, to see with this process is a myriad of pers- because what we're making here, what we're going to end up doing with this process is we are going to make a decision that is going to impact the city of West Jordan well beyond our terms, well beyond the terms of the mayor. Well, it could be, it could be, it could be as much as well beyond the employment of a lot of people in this city because we could be, well, literally, we are making a, with, with retention elections, we are making a lifetime appointment. And, and if the person wants to continue to serve, they serve forever until they resign, retire, whatever, or get voted out. And there have been a couple of justices of the peace that have been voted out. And they deserve to be. But, you know, and there's been a couple of standing judges that have failed to, but by and large, the retention elections hold. And so I would just like different perspectives. It's nothing against, it's nothing against Corbin. I would just like, and, and I know what his workload is. I agree with Councilmember Whitelock. Corbin, this is nothing against you because, because like she said, you're going to be involved in this decision at some point in time anyway. I, and, and the other thing that I will just throw out is when Mr. Peters from the nominating commission says, this is the way we always do it. That's also because when they, they include the city manager, and no offense, you're not a city admin, you're not the city manager anymore, right? The city manager is 241 other cities in the state. There are eight of us that are different. And so when another state, when another city does a, yeah, the city manager is the full-time, for lack of a better term, in a lot of, in a lot of cities, the city manager is the CEO. Well, you, you know, we could appoint the mayor, but the, but in this, in this perspective, we're, we're a little bit different. And so I'm okay with being different than the, the average way of doing it, just because most of the other cities that do that, the CEO is really in charge of the executive branch and won't make that final. And the council makes the final appointment where in our form of government, you make the appointment and we do the advice and consent. So I think there's a little wiggle room that I would like to just expand that pool and expand the diversity and perspective. That's just me.
Councilmember Bedore.
I, I, on, on many stances, I agree with what Councilmember Whitelock and Councilmember Green have said. My, my only real reservation coming into this at the moment is that Mr. Jerome isn't here.
He is, he is listening online.
Okay.
If you want him to comment, I think he's available online.
Okay. Well, then, and that's great. And Councilman Whitelock has said that she has spoken to him. I only do that because we're putting someone into a position to, you know, interview people and we didn't even interview the person we're putting into the position. And that, to me, comes off a little strange because, and it could be, and now that I'm hearing that Councilman Whitelock has spoken to him, that he may not feel that he is the best person to do this position. And our job is to put someone into that position, but our job is to probably put the best person to put into that position. That's my only real reservation. I, I don't have a, a problem with putting him into it, but I would like to have heard maybe his thoughts as to what he thinks he can bring to that. I love the idea of new perspective, perspectives. I also agree that he can go to Corbin, but if he can go to Corbin and do those things, are we really not just using, you know, Mr. Lee anyway? And if we just put in someone, I also love growth for, for somebody and I like him doing that. Again, that's my only, only reservation is that if this was going to be something we changed, that the person we're going to put in is not here to address themselves. And maybe if Mr. Lee can say, I think that Mr. Jerome would be a very great person, then that's probably good enough for me. Not that I'm, I'm happy to go with whichever way the council wants to go on this, but that's my only reservation is that I, I feel a little uneasy putting someone into a position that I have not heard from them saying, I'm ready to step up and do this.
Thank you. I'd like to just ask Corbin your thoughts on what's been discussed. I don't know if you're blindsided a little bit by this or not, but I would like to just hear what, hear what you have to say as one of the names proposed and as one of the names proposed to be replaced.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Whitelock did call me and share these thoughts in advance. Thank you. I have a couple of comments and then I'll share some perspective. I, I have served on the Judicial Nomination Committee in the past. I did it when I was the Assistant CAO. So it is, it is appropriate that you're considering the Assistant CAO. I did it when I was the Assistant CAO because I supervised the court administrators and the court operations at the time. I have 20 years' experience working with juda, uh, justice courts and justice court operations. I feel like I'm very confident and competent to be on the commission. However, I think there is value in nominating Paul Jerome. Mr. Jerome does not have as much experience working with justice courts. That would be exposure for him. He is very busy also. So, you know, bandwidth, I think we're about equal. I hope we're about equal. If we're not, I gotta delegate more. But I think we're both very busy, but it would both be fine making the time to do this. This really is one of the most important decisions we will make for the long-term future of our city because I think Councilman Green, you mentioned, you know, it is, it's nearly a lifetime appointment standing for these retention elections. If you don't want to consider myself or Paul, I would ask that you consider Josh Chandler as our city attorney. He is the third person I would endorse or support, strongly suggest be representing West Jordan where he supervises the prosecutors but is not a prosecutor. So he's a little bit removed from the conflict of interest, but he has a lot of dealings with the justice court and a lot of perspective. Anyways, I'm happy to do it. I would like to do it, but I'm also happy if you appoint Paul or Josh.
Perfect. Thank you for chiming in. Councilmember Whitelock.
I was Chair, I was just going to ask you to please ask Mr. Jerome as well. I, I agree with Councilmember Bedore, and I probably should have let you guys know that when I talked about it, that I spoke with both of them.
Okay, he is online, so.
Yeah, and, but, but do be aware that Mr. Jerome is in Florida, so his connection could, may or may not be good. So, no, his, actually, he is, he is an awesome father. He is there because his daughter is there.
Okay. Let's go to Councilmember Shelton.
This, what we're voting on tonight is for two people who will represent the council in selecting nominations, correct? Thank you. So I guess here's my concern. Ultimately, it's the mayor's choice on who to nominate. I feel like the office of the city administrator and the assistant city administrator is so closely tied to the mayor that we're almost bypassing a step of having some separation between selection of, of the people who will be ultimately go before the mayor for selection for the ultimate selection of, of a nomination. I, I think I'd feel more comfortable with Mr. Chandler. But maybe I'm, maybe I'm barking up the wrong tree here. Could anyone point me, redirect my thoughts here?
Well, I'll chime in. I don't, I don't think we go wrong either way. And we'll go to Paul after this, give him a chance to speak because he's online. I don't think you go wrong really either way. I would prefer it not to be an attorney because our attorneys appear before the judge that they will be appointing, and I wouldn't want there to be the appearance, not that there would be, but the appearance of a quid pro quo kind of a thing like, hey, you wouldn't have your job if I didn't, you know what I mean? If I didn't put you on the shortlist or whatever. Not, it's, I'm not impugning the character of our attorney or of the candidates for, for the judge in any stretch, but I don't want there to be the appearance of that. And so keeping that out of the attorney's office and with administration and, you know, supervisor of the court staff who's familiar with the operations but not directly, you know, arguing in front of. That's just my thought is, is why I would, I would prefer to keep it out of the attorney's office personally. Just for the appearance sake. But that's just me. Let's go to Paul if we can have him comment online. Paul, you should be ready to go. Let's get your thoughts.
Thank you. Can you, can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you. By the way, where in Florida are you?
Just south of Orlando.
And I assume it's raining?
It is raining and it's very windy, so the power is still on though. So I am able to speak and see you guys. So that's, that's good. So all is good so far.
All right.
Well, yeah, I, I spoke to Councilmember Whitelock briefly about this just what, a couple of hours ago, actually. And as anything goes in, in local government, I'm happy to do whatever I can to help the city. But saying that, Mr. Lee's comments about my inexperience with justice courts is correct. The previous city I managed, we did not have a justice court, so I do not have experience to this end, unlike, unlike him. So again, we, you know, he's right, we are, we are busy, but again, these things are important and they need their due process, and I'm happy to do whatever, whatever's needed.
All right, thank you. Mayor, your lights on? Mayor Burton?
May I speak? I, I haven't been in this position before either. So I'm excited about this opportunity that we have for the city. As I have talked with Corbin about the people who are appointed by the county to be on this board to select somebody, they're mostly people like attorneys and such like that. And so I'll be looking for someone that can do that part. I think an important part we need to keep in mind is that judge runs that department over there, so he's not just an attorney, but he's also an administrator. And so we need someone that evaluates the administration abilities of. And so we need someone that evaluates the administration abilities of this person in addition to their legal abilities, which are both critical for someone. So we could find a judge that's new at this and hasn't ever done that before, and we want to make sure that they'll be able to handle the administrative as well. So with taking that account, I think the three people that you've talked about, Corbin and, I should say, Mr. Lee, Mr. Jerome, and Mr. Chandler, would do very well, but if you wanted my preference, I'd choose him in that same order as well.
Great, thank you. Any further comments, discussions, or a motion? Councilmember Whitelock.
I want to give a motion, but did we want to change the wording in the resolution?
The resolution, oh, just, all we need to change is.
No, just the advice and consent.
Advice and consent, yeah, and then insert the two names.
So I'll move to approve Resolution 24-038, naming the following two members to serve on the Justice Court Nominating Committee, Paul Jerome and Carol Warnock, and deleting the advice and consent from the resolution.
We have a motion. I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Whitelock and a second by Councilmember Green. Discussion to the motion. I'm not seeing any, but I will mention something, then we'll go to Councilmember Shelton, as, I, I didn't really care until the last two comments. I thought, and I still think both Corbin and Paul would do a fine job at this. Both are excellent evaluators of talent, judges of character. I think those are the most important thing. But the importance of the position leads me to prefer somebody who's done it.
Somebody who's what?
Somebody who's done it, somebody who's been there and done that and had the exposure, and like, like Paul said, is, is, that's not him. Now, that's to, that's to say that he wouldn't do fine, because I think he would. But just with the importance of position, that's just the thought that's in my head right now. I'm still, I'm not sure how I'll vote. Councilmember Shelton?
I, I really am torn on this one. I, I don't have really strong feelings on any one particular candidate versus another. Your, your comment of, of not using an attorney made sense, although I was leaning that direction. I'm, I'm willing to see what other thoughts are before I vote.
Councilmember Whitelock.
I just want to remind everyone that Mr. Lee will still have input. When it comes to the mayor, I have no doubt they'll work together, so the name that comes before us will have Mr. Lee's input and experience behind it.
Councilmember Bedore.
Well, with that, I would think that Mr. Jerome would have influence as well if he's working with Corbin Lee. So I, I, I have been going back and forth on this. Again, my, my feeling, though, with this now is really, our job is to put the best person in the position. I love both gentlemen, but I think one has had experience. And if I was starting a business, I would always hire the person with experience over the person who has not done it before, especially something this important. So I, I would prefer the original name in.
Thank you. I did want to ask staff before I go to the vote. Who is, who does Carol Warnock report to?
She reports to Judge Coons.
Okay, and.
She supervises the court clerks and supervises the administration of the court. Her boss is Judge Coons.
Okay, and Judge Coons doesn't necessarily report to city administration, does he?
Judge Coons and I coordinate, and he comes to cabinet, but he is not beholden to city administration. He is independent, as noted separately, stands for retention election.
So you mentioned that you, when you did this before as Assistant CAO in Sandy, it was because you were over courts. Who is over courts here?
So I, I work with courts here.
Okay, so it does report up.
In that regard, in, in that sense.
All right. All right, thanks. I think I'm more comfortable putting Corbin in that spot, too, at this point, too. I could go, again, I could go either way, but I think I'm, I think I'm 60/40. I know, that's my, that's my explanation for what I'm about to vote on unless we have a substitute motion. But seeing no further discussion, let's go to the vote on, on the motion as written.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
No.
Chair Jacob?
No.
Thank you. I show that motion passes four to two.
It does, perfect. And Paul, no, no vote of, that was not a vote of no confidence in you. I know you'll do fine, like I said. So thank you for that. Let's go on to the next item on the agenda as we are rifling through this. This is a potential reconsideration of Ordinance 2441, which was discussed at our last meeting, amending certain sections of Title I, Chapter 15. This passed last meeting with a 6-0 vote, but Councilmember Shelton asked that this be put back on the agenda for a potential reconsideration. I'm going to go to Councilmember Shelton, if that's okay. Okay, well, okay, let's go to Director Anderson.
Yeah, the only, the only reason I want to start with this one is there's some new council members that may not have been through the process of reconsideration before reconsideration is a Roberts Rules procedure. Typically, under Roberts Rules, it is done in the same meeting, however, council rules kind of makes modifications to that. Motion to reconsider can be done by this council up to two meetings after the action was taken, so this is the first meeting. There could be one more meeting. The motion of reconsideration tonight is simply if there's enough votes to reconsider. This is not talking about amending anything. That's not what this is. This is simply if you want to reconsider the motion. It requires four votes, so a four votes in the affirmative for reconsideration basically removes it from the process, takes it from the, the mayor's table, if I can use the table term, and brings it back to the council table. And under Roberts Rules that you've adopted by code, the vote, proposing the question that comes before the, I'm sorry. By moving to reconsider the vote, propose that the question shall come before the assembly again, as if it had not been previously voted on. So that's basically take, when you're, when you're in a meeting like this, you have items on the table as you're discussing it, and then you take action and remove it from the table. If there's a vote to reconsider this item, it was, it's as if you didn't pass it last meeting. It comes back to the council. We'll schedule that time for further discussion. Anything less than four votes, the process continues forward as it currently is.
Okay, thank you. Does this, does this, Mr. Parliamentarian, does this motion require a second? Yes.
Yes, under reconsideration, Roberts Rules, the, a person voting in the affirmative has to make the motion. Anybody can make the second. Since this passed with a 6-0 vote, Councilmember Jake, Council Chair Jacob was not here, he can make a motion if he chooses to, but any of the six of you, seven of you can make a motion, because it was done by a majority, and there are certain rights that are given to a council member that is absent, who can declare what his vote would have been, but the motion has to be by.
By a member of the prevailing side.
Member of the prevailing side, anybody can make a second, and it's not a supermajority, it's just four votes.
Okay, so now I'll go to Councilmember Shelton.
Thank you. I'm just going to read.
Would you like to make the motion?
My statement. Not yet. I'll make a moment.
Okay, we'll go ahead and give you the.
I'll make a motion after I've read my statement.
Okay.
Thank you. So the, the adopted penalty for not filing a campaign finance report is prohibition to run in the next municipal campaign. After approval, it was brought to my attention that the option of a financial penalty was never discussed by the council. I talked with each member of the council about this issue, and I found that there was little to no, no support for changing the prohibition of running in the next election cycle to a strictly financial penalty. I found that there may be support from the council to combine the financial penalty with a prohibition on running in the next election. And so I'm bringing that back today. Now, additionally, this is a separate issue. Additionally, I am concerned that there is a loophole that would allow a candidate to ruin, to run sooner than intended. As stated in Title I, Chapter 15, Section 4, Line 129, a candidate is only prohibited from running in the next municipal election. This means that if there was a district candidate who fails to win their district race, or a district candidate who did win, and either of them does not file financial reports, they could run for the same seat in four years because they did not run in an at-large election that was sandwiched between the two district elections. I think the wording needs to be more specific in prohibiting a person from running for a period of four years to eliminate this loophole. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider Ordinance 2441 for the purpose of making these amendments to the penalties section.
There's a motion to reconsider on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second, so we can talk about it.
Okay, so we have a motion to reconsider by Councilmember Shelton, seconded by Councilmember Bedore. Is there discussion to the motion to reconsider? Now, this is not a discussion to approve or not approve the ordinance. This is just to bring it back up and talk about it some more and vote on it again. This is a motion to vote. What I'm going to ask you for now is your vote on whether we're going to vote on it again. Talk about it again, vote on it again, right? So you vote, your vote now is to put it back on the table. It is not yet on the table. Is that clear? Go ahead, Councilmember Bedore.
So my reason to second that is strictly the part that was, was brought up by Councilmember Shelton right at the end, and I could probably be told that we could just go ahead and prove this and change that thing later, and I would be okay with that as well, so someone can let me know there. Yeah, if that loophole is there, as you said, then my thing would be to make it two. Two cycles, to make sure that you don't get any. I know that the reason for bringing this back is because of a fear of it making look like we want to stop someone from being able to run for office. But I don't, I don't think that that is really what this is. This is about, you're running for an office that makes the rules, and if you can't follow the rules, you shouldn't be making the rules. It should be that simple. When I ran, I knew nothing about elections. I knew nothing about any of this. But we have a city recorder who is the best in the state, who was on us constantly saying, "Get this in, get this in. Bob, you didn't sign this right." Oh, and I'd get on it right away. Anyone who is not doing their financials is doing it because they don't want to. And they are making a statement saying they don't want to. And if you don't want to follow the rules, you don't get to make the rules. And if you don't want to be transparent, you don't get to be up here on this council, because that's what we need to be about, is transparency. So I will only reconsider this if it's so we can fix, fix it so that it's two cycles instead of one cycle. I, I don't see a money thing being, Andy, was it going to be 50 bucks? Is it going to be, because that's going to be nothing if someone was, would rather pay $50 than show their financials. That I, 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 I just don't care about that, especially since someone who would want to run again after losing probably feels like they've got enough donation funding, and that's going to be something where money is not going to worry them, because it'll be something they, they won't care about. And if they messed up their financials, they'll just mess them up again this time, and that money, whatever they paid, will be hidden in whatever the new financials. I also know that if someone wins and doesn't do their financials, they're not allowed to have the office. So that tells me right there that we should be saying, if you don't do this, you don't get to run. And that's where I'm going to go on this. So again, I'm only open to reconsider if it's to change that, and if it's something that we can just let it stand, go back and fix that one thing later. I'm good with that as well.
Councilmember Whitelock.
I would just like to get the city attorney's take on, are we interpreting code right, that they could then, the proposed, well, what we passed, that they could then run?
I, I think, I think that we're, we're considering a motion to reconsider yet.
Right, and I want to know if that's accurate, if that is accurate from the attorney, then.
So vote for the motion to reconsider then, so that we can bring it back on the table and have that discussion.
We can bring it back anyway to have that discussion, right? We don't have to have this motion pass, right?
That was actually going to be my comment. On the, on the motion to reconsider, my comment is, what has been mentioned was not previous law, and it is not what has been enacted law. It is a, to use a fun Latin legal term, it's a de novo consideration. It's, it's a new, whether it's a financial penalty, whether it's two election cycles or one election cycle, it's something that was not in the ordinance that was passed and was not in the ordinance before that ordinance was passed. So it's a new application. We're talking about something that was not considered before, so we're not reconsidering what was passed. We're considering something different. So this is an amendment. My preferred course of action. No, no, that's not, not really true. We're, we're, as, as Alan said, we're reconsidering, and it takes our previously passed action off the table as passed. So it, if we, if we do reconsideration, then what we're saying is that the 6-0 vote that we did two weeks ago is no longer there, and we will recon, we will discuss and continue to discuss Or, Ordinance Number 2441, and it, the provisions that we wanted to amend in that as if we had never enacted it, and that's where we're at. Can I have the floor back? Okay, thank you. Regardless, I think the better course of action with what's being discussed would be a new application. That is, that is my opinion. That's why I'll be no on the motion to reconsider. So my, my, as Councilmember Shelton asked me to restate, so I, so I will. My preferred course of action is not to bring back up and undo what was done. I think you need an amendment going forward to amend what was done with a new application. So this would be just a new, we don't have an election for 12 and a half months, primaries notwithstanding. So my, my preferred is we're not, we don't have a time crunch here to, to undo something, to redo it. So let's look at an amendment to that as a new application, as opposed to a, a reconsideration. That's just my, my opinion is a reconsideration is to, is, is we did something wrong because, and we have now come up with information that has led us to believe that we, we, we didn't do it, not that we did something wrong, we did something that we have now thought better of, and we should take that back. And what I'm hearing is not that we want to take it back. Nobody's really changed their mind on what was done. They just want to go another step forward, and that would be my preference, is take it another step forward as opposed to step back and leave us where we were, because then if that doesn't pass, we are left from where we were before and not where we are now, and I prefer where we are now to where we were before. So that's just my, my two cents on that. Councilmember Green, we'll go to you, and then we'll do the vote.
I, I agree with you there, is that if, if we want to un, if we want to do, if we want to modify this because we overlooked something with the election cycle, let's just amend it. To reconsider it, to, to, to take it back like we hadn't done anything is not where I want to go. I want to go. I, I agree with Council, Council Chair Jacob, that it can be a new application, and we can look at the wording, but if we, if we do reconsideration, then what that does is it takes the use of the city logo off, it takes the, a couple other things that we clearly want in the ordinance, and if there's a couple of words, let's go back and fix it. We can amend it. To put it back where we were two weeks ago and, and, and basically start over, I'm not, I'm not ready to, I, I won't go down that road.
Thank you. I see the mayor's light on, but this is a motion to reconsider, it's a council discussion, so we'll see how this motion goes, and then if we have something to talk about, we'll have you, we'll give you the floor. So this is not require a roll call vote, it's a procedural motion, but let's do a roll call vote anyway. I just don't want to do an all in favor.
Councilmember Whitelock?
No.
Councilmember Green?
No.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
No.
Chair Jacob?
No.
Councilmember Bloom?
No.
Thank you. I show that motion fails one to five.
Thank you. And it's not to say that the topic is out of, you know, out of bounds now, we, we just need to move forward from where we, from the step we took, as opposed to taking a step back first, so. I'll just note parenthetically for the record that the last reconsideration that I recall doing was, we talked about the sewer fees, switching it from a usage fee, our sewer fee is based on wintertime water usage, you know? And we talked about taking that to a flat fee, and it passed, and then we got a bunch of feedback and a bunch of comments saying, why didn't you consider this? Why didn't you consider that? Had a discussion among the council, we brought it back up to reconsider it because we wanted to pull it back. We wanted to put it back to the way it was. We decided that that was actually better. So the reason why you have to be on the prevailing side is you have to have changed your mind, right? And so that's, anyway, there you go. So, moving on with the agenda then, thank you for that discussion and the little parliamentary education we got there.
Move to approve item eight, consent items.
Next item on the agenda is the consent items. This is approved meeting minutes and a council attendance at the Utah Trends Conference. A motion to approve by Councilmember Green.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Whitelock. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, let's go voice vote on this one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so rule those are approved and approved. And the next item on the agenda is a closed meeting, which we do not have actually a need for, that's been canceled, so we'll take a motion to adjourn, and then we will have a committee of the whole meeting in the conference room. Councilmember Green?
Move to adjourn and go to committee of the whole.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Whitelock. All in favor, say aye. Well, that motion passes, we are adjourned, and we will meet in the conference room and let's call it eight o'clock.